Regularly scheduled meeting of town council to order the last meeting of two thousand seventeen. We're in seventeen, right? Two thousand seventeen.
Next week.
Unless we have like a really short meeting that needs to be called. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll declare them as approved. Oh, yes, we just have the one delegation. Ash and Romanizer are not coming tonight. She will be rescheduling for some time in January. So we will declare the agenda approved as is. And are there any announcements from members of council? Anything coming up that you wish to mention?
I'll just say I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Enjoy your time with your family and friends.
Yes, thank you. I'll just give a super quick update because Councilor, Deputy Mayor Tanner and I will do a presentation in the new year, I think, a formal presentation on the conference that we were at, which was the International Network of Michelin Cities. And just for clarification, this was not a Michelin conference. It was in the city of Clermont-Ferrand in France, which is where Michelin has its head office. But, and the CEO for Michelin International was there, and we did have a tour of the R&amp;D facility, but it really was put on by the city and with funding from the French government. As this was the first one, they didn't want to go and ask Michelin for too much in case nobody came to the conference. Four hundred people came to the conference. Thirty cities represented twenty-one countries, from twenty-one different countries. We were the smallest municipality with our eighty-six hundred people. The largest was Bangkok with fourteen million people. And I'll tell the story again because I'm never sick of telling the story, that after delivering the Energized Bridgewater Plan in one of the breakout sessions, a gentleman came up, an engineer from India representing his city of eight million people, and came right out and said that the Energized Bridgewater Plan basically solved the problem that their city of eight million people were having because they could not fund any kind of energy improvements for their residents because the power corporation there has a bit of a hold, let's say, on the government. Therefore, the government will not give any incentives to anyone in terms of, you know, for them, it's not a heating issue, it's a cooling issue, but for heat pumps for cooling or air conditioning or any kind of insulation for their homes. So presenting how we do our PACE financing and that kind of funding model, he just said it just solved the problem. And a gentleman from Oklahoma City had the same thing. He's an entrepreneur, quite wealthy businessman, who said the same thing, except for the PACE style program. He would be the bank instead of the city. So it was, it was pretty, pretty cool to have our plan have that much of an impact, not just because we can make a difference halfway around the world, but I think it also gives quite a bit of validity to the plan that Leon has put before us. And it was just, it was kind of a surreal moment. And then after that, there was an international press conference, kind of like you see on TV with all the, like forty photographers and the cameras were going. And the question they asked the mayor of Clermont-Ferrand was, how do you know that this conference was worth it? He turned, he looked towards me and he said, because that town solved that city's problem and they have eighty-six hundred people and they have eight million people. And that was, that was really cool. So we should be proud of our staff. We should be proud especially of Leon and his team to put this forward and of this council and the previous councils that for a decade have continually said, this is where we have to go and supported it, I would say unanimously for the last ten years to see us where we are and then to get us to the next point. So we'll give more, more detail in probably January, but it was really cool and one of the best conferences I've been to. It's certainly worth the eight hundred and two dollars it costs the town to go. Did you want anything, add anything really quick?
No highlights will do.
No? All right, cool. Anyone else have any other announcements? Oh, okay. So we have, I believe we have our Bridgewater Junior High School students here to give their presentation on beach volleyball. So welcome, if you want to come on down and introduce yourself. Pretty exciting, so thank you for coming.
I'm Sidney McMillan. I go to Bridgewater and I was supposed to have more people here with me, but unfortunately, you know, they couldn't be here, so it's just going to be me. I'm here to discuss putting in a beach volleyball court in Bridgewater. So this is my presentation. All right. Beach volleyball in Bridgewater. Why in Bridgewater? With a strong history in volleyball, a beach volleyball court in Bridgewater would be a major convenience to all the beach volleyball players and also regular volleyball players. The main target audience you're going to be looking at is the club volleyball teams, such as Smash and Chill Volleyball. There is about sixty girls from Chill Volleyball and about forty-four from Smash Volleyball. That totals to a hundred and four club volleyball players, so already you're looking at a big group that would be interested. Now counting school volleyball, at local schools, there is about a hundred and twenty-five volleyball players, give or take. That is a lot of youth interested in volleyball. Beach players from Bridgewater. Considering we don't have a beach volleyball court in Bridgewater, the amount of volleyball players from Bridgewater playing beach is rather impressive. A couple examples are Courtney Baker, who played for Dow and Team Canada, Kelsey Bond, who plays for U N B, Peyton DeWolf, who plays for Acadia, and finally Michaela Sabian, who plays for Acadia, along with her beach partner Victoria Hayworth, who plays for Dow and also played Canada Games beach volleyball. All of these players have played with the Bridgewater Chill Volleyball Club in recent years and can be seen helping out at various team practices throughout the season. With so many current role models for the players of today, it seems like a perfect time to invest in their volleyball futures by providing them with a local venue. Now just imagine the number of beach players we could have if we had a local beach court. Currently, girls have to travel all the way to the Halifax region just to hit the sand. With so many teen girls leaving organized sports, approximately sixty-four percent by the time they turn sixteen, it would be great to develop an outlet for a sport where the majority of players are female. This could potentially support some of the girls who may not have had the best luck within the school and club teams. It could give them another option besides quitting the sport altogether. Of the girls surveyed, sixty-seven percent said they feel society does not encourage them to play sport, and sixty-one percent wished there were more female role models in sport, suggesting interest in female sport would improve as a result. Number of courts. The optimal amount of courts that would be the best is six courts. Although this will bump the price up, it will give more availability, which would spike more interest. So if you were to show up and one court is already in use, there would be plenty more available. I think having more than one court is an absolute necessity. To run a small beach league in Bridgewater, you would require a minimum of three courts, therefore running three games and six teams at a time. Cost of a court and maintaining costs. An estimated cost of one beach volleyball court is ranging from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars. So six volleyball courts would cost anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Although I couldn't find a lot of information on the long-term maintenance cost of a court, it would have to include topping up sand levels, replacement nets, and just general landscaping. Possible location for the beach court. The best location I can think of would be in the area around the LCLC. Depending on the number of courts you decide to build, that would determine the exact location. With the new skate park and fantastic facilities of the LCLC, it would be a great area to add the beach courts. They could utilize some of the washroom, cafe, and parking of the facilities, as well as attract some additional traffic to the area through tournaments and hopefully a beach league. This seems to be the model the city is going with as well, as the BMO Center in Hammond's Plains has recently added three beach courts to their facility. Conclusion. In conclusion, I believe a beach volleyball court would be a fantastic addition to our town. It would help support youth programs in the community and also encourage female participation in a possible new sport for them. Within a few years, Bridgewater could be the leading town in beach volleyball, and you can make it happen.
Very well done. Will you take some questions from councillors? Anyone have any questions?
I had no idea that there are that many players. That's a lot, over a hundred. That's amazing.
So normally what we would do is we would take your information and refer it to staff, right? So they'll, they have connections with other cities and towns that have beach volleyball courts, and they'll get some, some prices from them and they'll get to know the maintenance costs and things like that. And so that will come back to council as a report.
All right.
So Deputy Mayor Tanner, yeah?
Sidney, do you think if we had something like this, that it would help create or encourage perhaps more male players as well, like to create more male teams, or is it just not an interest?
I think it definitely could. It really depends on how they all feel about it, but I think if they had the opportunity to play, they might just go and like try it out and that could really help.
Counselor Thorburn.
Yeah, great presentation. Are you making this presentation to the Municipal District of Lunenburg? Because they're kind of partners with the LCLC, and it could be a funding partner, additional source of revenue, and I'm sure there's lots of beach volleyball players outside of the town limits that could use a court as well.
Yeah, definitely. I know some people would come into Bridgewater because I have some friends in Lunenburg who also are really interested in beach volleyball, so I know a lot of them would be, would come in and play here.
Great, thank you. Counsel McDowell.
Good job, Sid. The beach volleyball circuit, there's, there's a circuit of tournaments, is there not?
I'm not quite sure.
I think there's some on the volleyball Nova Scotia website, so do you think that Bridgewater could be a destination for, as part of that circuit?
Yeah, I think it definitely could because really the only real location nearby is in the Halifax area, so I think having Bridgewater as another location would be a great advantage to possibly getting some more tournaments and stuff going on here.
That's great.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Sidney. You did a fantastic job, so you have a great public speaking voice and confidence there, so well done.
I'm not quite sure how to.
I think you can just, you can just leave that. Thank you. Okay, so we'll, do we need a motion to refer that, to refer that to staff for information and a report? So I want to make that motion, please, Counsel Thorburn. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further discussion?
No question.
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Minutes from November twelfth, November twenty-sixth, regular town council meeting are there for your approval. If someone would like to make a motion for those, please. Counsel Frazier.
Yes, I'll make motion. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, approving the minutes of November twelfth and November twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, regular town council meeting as circulated.
Thank you. Have a second here, please. Counsel McDowell, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, opposed? Motion is carried. Down to planning items, land use bylaw amendments. I like that you put housekeeping in brackets there. So I'm going to assume that our planner is going to, Director of Planning is going to update us on these.
Thank you, yes. So earlier this year, we did some other housekeeping amendments. So there were nine earlier, which were primarily grammar and typo type of, type of amendments. These are also just, they do not require a policy amendment in the planning strategy. They are, we view them as housekeeping. There were some items that we realized were forgotten in the development or the review in the two thousand and fourteen documents, so household repair services were omitted from the downtown, historic downtown C one zone and the urban commercial zone. Automobile repair services were forgotten, omitted out of the industrial zone, which if there's ever a place to do automobile repair services, it should be in the industrial zone. And there were some other clarifications that were required. It's sort of, research needed a definition because we have some great examples of research facilities here, and it's definitely something that we're hearing more coming from council in terms of priorities, but we hadn't clearly defined it because normally it's happening accessory to another use that's going on. But we thought this would help define where, if someone was looking to set up a slightly larger than an office type of, of research facility, but not a full-scale manufacturing, processing, or, or assembly type of facility, we sort of needed to define where that type of use could happen. Because otherwise, if we don't, our documents say it's prohibited, so then it wouldn't be allowed to be anywhere in town. So we're suggesting that research facilities is proposed to be a new permitted use in the group commercial, general commercial, and in both industrial zones, which makes perfect sense for it to be, be there. And then we've also had a proliferation of shipping containers starting to come up and be used as temporary storage in people's yards on commercial and residential. So for the time being, we'd like to just clarify that they are temporary structures and would be governed by the temporary structures, regulations within the land use bylaw, but that further discussion about the uses, locations, et cetera, for shipping containers would probably come out of other work that we might do around housing or other things because people are asking about the use of shipping containers for many different uses. But that's a much larger type of review and would require policy, et cetera. So this is just to clarify that right now, we're treating shipping containers for storage as a temporary structure. It's not on a foundation, it's not, you know, it's just basically being plunked down and that's how we would treat it. And then in the amendments that went forward earlier this year, we forgot to amend or change the definition, not really change, but just omit some parts of the regulatory part of the definition of temporary ground signs. The regulation of it should never be in the actual definition of what a temporary ground sign is. That's to be within the bylaw itself. And so that was just something that we didn't realize was in there until we went to actually share that definition with another municipality. We realized that it had the regulatory part of the land use bylaw embedded in the definition section, so we just wanted to clean that up. So those are the nine sort of housekeeping amendments that are going forward. There's also, I forgot, in the removal of food banks as a specific permitted use because it was redundant within the group, sorry, the general commercial zone. It listed food banks, but it also lists institutional uses, and food bank is a permitted institutional use, so it was just redundant. So that's why we struck that out. That's it.
Any questions from councillors? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just on the shipping containers. So what are the rules around that? So if I'm building a, putting up a new building, can I have a shipping container there on site?
Yep, that's for construction use.
For how long?
That's governed separately for the duration of the construction and a little bit beyond. It's within the land use bylaw. I'd have to look it up specifically, but it's, it's allowed. Incidental to construction.
Just one, or can you have multiple?
That's a good question.
Out of curiosity. Okay.
Let me take a look.
No, 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 don't. I'm just curious.
Probably more than, it would depend on the size of the construction site, size of the lot, et cetera. But yeah.
Okay, good. Counsel Graves.
So you had mentioned that if research businesses were not mentioned, therefore they'd be prohibited? So would the same go for adult entertainment if they're taken out or not mentioned that it's prohibited?
Yeah, but we have that permission. It's, it's already, we've specified where adult entertainment can happen in town. So yes, if it was fully removed, it would be a prohibited use.
Yeah. Any further questions? My, my question is similar to, about the shipping containers and just, and maybe an email update to council, just, not just the number that you could have, but if it's not for construction, if it's literally just for storage.
Then it's a temporary structure and it's about two hundred and ten days that it would be allowed to be there. There's a time limit on it. There is a limit per, within a twelve-month period, and the clock doesn't start again until your time is up. It's all within the temporary structures piece of the land use bylaw. So that's why we just wanted to clarify that shipping containers are to be governed as a temporary structure because it has the timeframe, et cetera, all laid out.
Okay, and if they convert that shipping container into a tiny home, then I guess it becomes a tiny home, not a shipping container anymore?
No, it would still be a temporary structure, and the, the building code doesn't know how to deal with shipping containers as homes yet either. So the building code comes into play, so they wouldn't be able to convert it, is my understanding at this point in time.
I watch too much HGTV. Any other questions from council? Hearing none, someone, does someone have a question? Yeah? No, sorry. No, it's good. Shipping containers. Someone prepared to make a motion. Didn't want to cut you off.
I would move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, give first reading to the proposed text amendments of the land use bylaws contained in Appendix A of Document seventeen dash one nine four, and schedule a public hearing for the proposed text amendments to the land use bylaw as contained in Appendix A of Document seventeen dash one nine four for Monday, January eighth, two thousand and eighteen, during the regular meeting of council beginning at six o'clock PM in council chambers at Town Hall.
Have a second here, please. Seconded by Counsel Frazier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our next planning item is Planning Department intern.
Yes. So there's an opportunity through Science Horizon, federal government grant, which, where we could apply for thirty-three percent dollars for an internship position. Given the work and the, the plans we have through Energized Bridgewater, we thought it might be a great opportunity to be able to bring somebody on in a twelve-month position for working in the planning department on Energized Bridgewater and other planning matters. So the, the funding, I guess, right now is up to fifteen thousand dollars for a position, and we anticipate that the overall, including all admin costs and benefits, et cetera, would be about forty-five thousand dollars. That's where we come to the one-third grant to, two-thirds town. And then we're anticipating that the funding that we would be going after for Energized Bridgewater would then be able to further cover and reduce, so hopefully it would be a third, a third, a third, a third from Science Horizon, a third from another funding source, and a third from town, from town budget to support a twelve-month position to assist with Energized Bridgewater.
Questions from council on that?
I have one once we make a motion.
Okay, do you want to put the motion on the floor then?
I'll put the motion on the floor. That's one of three, I presume. I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater to approve a twelve-month planning and sustainability internship position for the Planning Department beginning March first, two thousand and eighteen, regardless of the outcome of the town's application of the Science Horizon's youth internship program.
Seconded by Counsel Thorburn.
The question. If we approve this motion, would that automatically disqualify us from getting the grant?
No. Not at all.
If we've approved it, no matter what.
Nope.
Because in case it's a previously established position, is that we're going with that?
Yeah.
No?
It wouldn't be.
Counsel Thorburn.
I agree with, you know, I think this position is so important that we should give you the approval, and if we can get funding, great. If we can't, then you better step it up with a cop because it's the right thing to do at the right time at the right place.
Well, if I may, we had a planning update here at our discussion session here this previous Monday, and there's a number of projects on the go in that department. We need some help.
You're also short-staffed right now, so this would alleviate some of that, some of that pressure. I realize that this is, has an Energized Bridgewater component to it, but it doesn't hurt.
No.
So motion on the floor, any further discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Last item under planning is Public Transit Pilot Project Update, and I see that Kenzie is here, so I'm going to assume that you are going to give us the update.
Hello? I've got an update about Bridgewater Transit, just some presentation points. Sorry. Oh, yeah. It worked? Oh, yeah. Oh, it's good. Just going through ridership so far, a survey that we've distributed, a glimpse into some of the stories that we've heard from passengers, a few promotional and consultation plans, as well as snow plans, the state of advertising right now, and some information on meeting our projections. So for ridership, for the first three weeks when we had free service, we had over two thousand passengers, and to date, we've had almost four thousand eight hundred passengers. On average, including the free weeks, we've had sixty-three passengers per day, and excluding the free weeks, it's been fifty passengers a day. I did want to point out that we have had, it always, it always varies, but we've had up to seventy, eighty, and a hundred and five people on one day last month, which was really great. We did distribute a survey at the start of the pilot project where we asked some questions on people's travel behavior and some information, or sorry, some opinions on the pilot project. We will be sending up a follow-up survey towards the end of the pilot project as well, so we can compare what people said pre-pilot or at the beginning of the pilot and after we've had the bus on the road for a few months. And for this survey, we had two hundred and fourteen respondents. So we asked a variety of questions. Some of the main ones based on travel patterns were how you travel within the Town of Bridgewater. There are a couple of questions relating to this, such as this one generally, the next one, which is your main method of traveling within the town, and also how you get to work, errands, recreation, different things like that. And this was kind of the main pattern. Most people got around by driving a car, and that was pretty, pretty obvious through each of those questions. We asked people's opinions about how they, how they thought about the route and the costs and different things like that. And overall, we had a high level of satisfaction, and we asked people to point out places on the map as well, or sorry, on the route where they would be stopping, and we had a wide variety of answers, which is great, but it's important to see where people think they are going to be heading with the transit system. And also, it'll be good to compare later to see where people have been going. We asked some different questions on social connectedness because that's really important. Oftentimes, social isolation is common in car-centric towns or cities, especially with older demographics, so it's really important to gauge how people feel in their community. It was really interesting because a lot of them said neutral, not very good, not very bad. So with this system, we hope we can further that and improve it, and we've heard some stories already where people are just taking the transit system to have that social interaction with people, and we've heard some really good stories about that, so we hope we can improve that and turn it into higher or very high. We also asked about some barriers that people might have. So the majority of people who answered the survey didn't have any barriers, but out of those who did, it really varied on what their issues were. But some of them were not having a driver's license, not having a car, and affordability was one that stuck out a lot as well. And when we asked people in the survey what they thought of the two-dollar fare cost, everyone, not, sorry, not everyone, most people said they were satisfied or very satisfied with that, so that's really nice to see that correlation. So we've heard a lot of positive stories about how people have been using the service. We've had people use it for work trips, errands, social trips, recreation. So far, we've had a lot of different weekly trips happening, so from daycares, the Verge House, the NSCC Achieve Program, they've been using it weekly, which is really great. And we've heard a lot of stories about people have been, who have been visiting new places. An example is a gentleman who was on the bus. He was talking to one of the bus drivers, and he had never been to the LCLC, and so the driver said he had to stop by and pop in there for a second, asked if he wanted to join him, and he did, and he was able to go there for the first time, which was really nice to hear. We also had a younger resident who was able to go to a lumberjack game for the first time because he's not allowed to walk to the LCLC, but he is allowed to take the bus. It's really nice to hear those stories. And we have some different plans coming up. A Christmas lights tour is one of them, and it doesn't change anything with the, the schedule or the service, but just kind of a promotion for people to use the bus in a different way and maybe not going to a destination, but using the bus to see different holiday displays along the route and kind of use it as an event and just kind of promote that use of the bus service. As I mentioned, we will be distributing a second survey, so we'll have more or less the same questions, and we'll be able to compare pre-pilot and kind of during pilot answers to that survey. And we plan to hold some focus groups as well to evaluate the service to date. The survey and the focus groups will probably be happening January, February. We want to be able to give enough time in the pilot project to get some good feedback, but also be able to provide, to provide it to you in a timely manner as well. We've had an interdepartmental meeting to create a snow plan. So we plan to distribute information to the public in preparation for inclement weather, so before it actually happens, just kind of letting them know that there might be some delays in services or some service changes happening. We want to get that information out as soon as we can. And we also now have an order of operations to determine, sorry, to determine if service will be delayed when there's any large storms. hopefully soon we will be getting those installed. And as for meeting our projections, the feasibility study projected forty-two riders per day, and as I mentioned, we have been exceeding that. This is the ridership after the free weeks, so there's been two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one total rides. The majority of those have been paying customers, and the free rides are children who are five and under, so there've been two hundred and seventy-seven of them. We've had twenty-four wheelchair passengers, six bicycles in the better weather. The one-fifty fare is youth and students, and the two-dollar fare is adults and seniors, and they've been eight thou, sorry, eight thousand, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four passengers. We've had good use of the ten-ride and thirty-ride passes as well, two hundred and five and a hundred and forty-four uses of those, and the HotSpot mobile app has had forty uses of that as well, so it's really nice to see these numbers broken down.
Amazing.
And, yeah, and it's great to hear that we've been exceeding those projections, and we hope to just keep on increasing those as well. Yeah, thank you.
I just got to say, I love when you said the story about the gentleman who'd never been in the LCLC, and it was the driver that asked them if he wanted to go with him, so I think that really is quite a testament to the staff that we have and the drivers that we've chosen, because I know that you, personality was like number one on the list. You want a driver that's personable, but I think that's, I don't know where else you would get that, where the driver says, "I have to stop for five minutes, why don't you come in with me?" So, you know, kudos to the driver. Any questions from members of council? Council Graves.
So, the free rides, the two-seventy-seven, or the childcare kids?
Yeah, so it's the children five and under are free.
Okay. And I've heard great things, they're exploring the community and places they've never gone before, and ten percent of that total is not too bad.
No.
That's a pretty good number.
Exactly.
I thought it would be higher, so that's good.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
So, we've got a lot of surveys of people who are using the bus. Have we done any outreach, or do we plan to do surveys of people who are not using the bus and finding out why they're not, or what we can do to change?
Yeah, so the surveys were for anyone. It could be people who, because it was just a bit after service started, so it was open to anyone, whether you lived in Bridgewater or not, and if you took the transit service or not, which is good. I don't actually have those statistics on. I think it was a question of if you intend to use it for the survey, but in those focus groups, I think it would be interesting to reach out to people who haven't been using it, because it's so important to hear why. Maybe they haven't been able to, maybe they don't want to, just different reasons for that, so.
Okay. Follow-up question?
So, just quick calc on those numbers, it looks like you've got about forty-five hundred dollars worth of revenue plus advertising, maybe somewhere around that vicinity?
Yes.
Yeah, so how does that?
It's mapping to what we had anticipated, which is great. I mean, we're also hoping, so we had sort of estimated, you know, about a thousand dollars in October, and we exceeded that.
Sure.
You know, and so it's sort of ramping up from that, because the first half of October was free.
Okay.
Right, so we're sort of, we're on target, which is great.
And are we seeing any sort of trends due to the holiday period, like people out shopping?
It's too early to tell right now, it's really...
Yeah, I guess it's only now.
Mackenzie has set up, the drivers are collecting data daily, hourly, so we can look at riders by hour of the day, day of the week. So, what's really interesting about that is just looking at, you know, the early part of the week seems to be a little bit quieter, but by Friday, Fridays are busiest days, you know, so you sort of, what we're seeing is an incremental up, so it sort of goes a little bit up by Friday, Saturday, then it sort of drops back down on Sunday, and then it gets a little bit higher, and we're just sort of seeing a slow, steady sort of increase in ridership, which is great, and we haven't done beyond the initial, we haven't done a large push in advertising recently, because we're still working out the bugs of the service, and now we're getting into really trying to promote it more and more, so there's still a lot of people out there that don't know that our bus is on the road and that they can take it, or where they can get that information, so I think that as we, now that the service is sort of happening, we can get more into the promotions piece to really try to get more riders out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it fair to say that the fine weather we're having this fall is hurting the ridership?
I don't know.
If the weather gets worse, you probably get more people driving, or colder, that type of thing?
It's so hard to tell, that's what a lot of people have been saying, and I've been trying to look at that, because sometimes the drivers will write down if it's been raining or something like that, and it's really, it's been hard to tell so far if it has affected it or not. I think it'll be interesting to see over the winter how it...
Yeah, the question I get quite often, and I talk about this, and it's, I gave them, I think, the right answer. If you get on the bus, or if the bus is at, say, the Deux Brise Museum at seven-thirty in the morning, then it's a safe bet that eight-thirty going back there again?
Yes, it's on the hour now.
Yeah, it's on the hour.
Absolutely on the hour.
Council Thorburn.
Yeah, we're into this a few moments now. How are the maintenance costs going with the bus? And, because if we ought to continue the service, we've got a bunch of work to do for funding and grants and whatnot for, I would assume, a new bus, and I don't know how long that takes, but I think it's important that we have a plan and a backup plan to make sure we get what we want when we need it.
There are older buses that end of service, we've certainly, we haven't blown the maintenance budget yet, which is great. We're halfway through the pilot, and we're on track, so we didn't, we anticipated that the buses would need more maintenance than perhaps a newer bus would, but I think that it's on track.
And there is funding available for newer buses when that time comes. Yeah, you're right, it might take some time. Council McDonald.
I know that they'll be part of one of your focus groups, but just wondering if seniors' wheels, or taxis, or any other services have reached out to you at this point with any concerns or feedback?
No, we haven't, no, no, which is good, I think.
Great.
I can just tell you that we had a meeting with taxi owners, all the taxi owners from Town shortly after the bus service launched. Their concern, their number-one concern has always been other taxis operating illegally, not the bus service, so I've, I'm kind of in regular contact with a couple of the owners of the larger cab companies, just to see if they're noticing anything, and right now they're not. They have their loyal customers that, and they do work for the school board and things like that, so that's not impacting them there, but their, when we launched, their number-one concern was not the competition with the bus, it was the competition with the taxi that's not regulated, that's not legal, that's charging a dollar, you know, no safety on the car, no background check on the driver, so that's, I mean, that's addressed later on in the agenda, but it's a good question, and it's something that I think we need to continue to monitor.
I don't know who to address this to, but at what point are we going to see actuals, budgeted numbers? Is that part of the budget process, or when's that going to be fleshed out a bit more?
Well, certainly in the third quarter report, if you wanted something sooner.
Isn't there something in the second quarter?
Yeah, but it's in your product.
Can you speak in your microphone, please?
(laughter)
So, there will be something in the third quarter report, I mean, it's mentioned in the second quarter report, but it's early, you know, there's not a lot of detail in the second quarter report, so if you wanted something specifically on transit, we could do something.
Well, I just, I guess just the comment about we haven't blown the maintenance budget, well, I can't remember what the maintenance budget was and/or what the actuals might be to date, and I just, things like that might be interesting to see.
Sure, I mean, sure.
And it might be too early.
The maintenance budget was twenty-four thousand dollars, thereabouts, and...
For the pilot?
For the pilot.
Okay.
Yep, yep, so it's, yeah, so we're, anyway, that's how much there is. Not everything's been posted in terms of how much has been spent to date, but we're not, you know, we're not at ninety percent of the budget, we're closer in around fifty percent, and we're fifty percent of the way through the pilot.
Okay. Council Graves.
Two questions, does the, do the statistics take into account the weather?
No, it hasn't been, I've been thinking about that more, it's kind of every once in a while, we'll hear about it, but it hasn't been, that hasn't been the focus.
But is this something you should be tracking, just?
I think at this stage, it could be interesting, but maybe not as useful as some of the other statistics, just because we don't really have maybe the capability of building bus shelters or anything like that, so I think the weather is definitely important later.
Just to see if it's a driver, ridership, was really the question. So, the second thing is in terms of outreach, I think Andrew asked a little bit earlier, are you doing much outreach, so that would be to the business community, to the nonprofit community, to the, those types of communities, are you?
We've done some to like schools and different things like that. It's been a little bit more focused on operations lately, but like Jessica said, there is some plans to do a little bit more of that promoting later.
And how is the lumberjack bus and Parkview?
The Parkview, I'm not too sure. Lumberjacks is being used, which is good, the ridership isn't super, super high, but I think every week it's being, or every game, there's riders on it.
And I take it they mentioned that at the games, that it's available?
There was the plan to do that, I'll check in about that, because I know at the beginning we had talked about doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, announcing it.
Okay, good.
Look at that, Council McGinnis.
I have not heard it.
No.
You haven't?
That's good to know, because we had talked about it.
It really did, like, the first time the bus ran, I think they announced that the bus would stay for fifteen minutes after the game.
Yeah, maybe it just was a one-time thing then.
Perhaps since we are a sponsor of the lumberjacks, part of our sponsorship should be, I mean, because we don't need the advertising for the Town, we need the advertising for the bus, so perhaps whoever can send them a memo and just say, "It's part of our sponsorship package," instead of just mentioning, "Hey, Town of Bridgewater is a sponsor," maybe Bridgewater Transit specifically?
A number of times.
Yeah. Maybe we should get that logo put on the ice.
Council McDonald.
So, when you mentioned that Sundays were slow, it kind of, you know, I thought about how we were discussing the fact that Alexandra Avenue is very congested on Sundays because of church, and you can park on both sides, and so that kind of made me wonder, Larry, has public transit addressed any issues that your department faces with traffic and movement of people and not seeing anything?
That's another outreach opportunity, though. I know that for us at the Baptist Church, we have announcements that go on the big screen, and I've got a picture of the bus reminding people, it arrives like fifteen minutes before church starts, and it leaves fifteen minutes after, like, it's perfect timing, so I'm sure it also coincides with some others, because we don't all start at the same time on a Sunday, so it might be worth reaching out to them, especially when a lot of towns don't have a Sunday service, so as we go down the road, if, when we go to a permanent service, if we have to make adjustments, I think the natural tend would be to perhaps drop that Sunday off, but if there's good ridership numbers, then we'd want to keep that. Just, the interchurch council, I don't know if they're active, but they would, they would be a good...
They just met.
So, it would be a good point of contact. Any other questions, Council Thorburn?
Just one, I see on the report that you've added a couple of stops, and you're completely, you're always adjusting that, and you certainly have the wave locations where people can wave and get on at certain locations, so that's good, you're reacting to your customers' demands, I guess. Thank you.
Anything else?
As always, if you have any questions, you can email through the CAO, and we'll get some information, and if you do want some more budget numbers as we go along, then just, maybe just make that request, and then we can have that brought forward.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kenzie. Nothing under correspondence for information or correspondence for action, we're down to reports and recommendations, and a citizen appointment to the Heritage Advisory Committee, if someone would care to make those two appointments. Council Frasier? Or someone else can do it.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater appoint Art Fisher and Chris Bedford to the Heritage Advisory Committee, each for a three-year term effective immediately.
Have a second here, please. Council Thorburn, any discussion?
No.
No, hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Recommendation Director Finance, temporary borrowing resolution. Ms. Kaiser.
So, this is the annual request for approval of the temporary borrowing resolution. Our current one expires in February, and it does take some time to get it through the Department of Municipal Affairs to get it approved, so we're required to have a temporary borrowing resolution before we can actually borrow, and plus, we may need some interim financing depending on, you know, the, because you can't permanently finance till projects are complete, so there may be some interim financing required. So, the amount of the temporary borrowing resolution is three million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, four, five hundred dollars, and that's made up of, the seventeen, eighteen capital budget included debt financing of one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred. We've also got work in process that requires debt financing of one-point-four million, and then there's three hundred thousand in pace financing, so that's what makes up the three million, two ninety-five, five hundred. Any questions? If you had, you'd answer them.
Questions from council? No, it's pretty routine. Questions, someone prepared to make a motion, please. Council Thorburn, thank you.
It's a large one, so I usually get the large one. Whereas section sixty-six of the Municipal Government Act provides that the Town of Bridgewater, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, may borrow to expend funds for capital purposes authorized by statute, and whereas clause sixty-five of the Municipal Government Act authorizes the Town of Bridgewater to expend funds for the capital purchases of, G, equipment and maintaining fire departments or emergency service providers, K, recreational program, X, lands and buildings required for municipal purpose, Z, acquisition of equipment, materials, vehicles, machinery, apparatus, implements, and plant for the municipal purpose, A, A, streets, culverts, retaining walls, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, A, B, placing underground the wiring and other parts of a system for supply or distribution of electricity, gas, steam, or other source of energy, or telecommunications system, A, G, playgrounds, trails, including trails developed, operated, or maintained pursuant to an agreement made under clause fifty-nine C, bicycle paths, swimming pools, ice arenas, and other recreational facilities, A, K, wastewater facilities and stormwater systems, and A, C, A, providing for financing and installing energy-efficient equipment on private property, including... without restricting the generality of the foregoing solar panels. And whereas the specific amounts and description of the projects are contained in Schedule A attached, be it therefore resolved that under the authority of section sixty-six of the Municipal Government Act, the municipality borrow a sum or sums not exceeding three million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars in total for the purposes set above, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, that the sum be borrowed for the issuing sale of debentures of the municipality to such an amount as the council deems necessary, and that the issue of debentures be postponed pursuant to section ninety-two of the Municipal Government Act, and... that the municipality borrow from time to time a sums or sums not exceeding three million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars in total from any chartered bank or trust company doing business in Nova Scotia, that the sum be borrowed for a period not exceeding twelve months from the date of approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs of this resolution, that the interest payable on the borrowing be paid at a rate to be agreed upon, and that amount borrowed be repaid from the proceeds of the debenture sought.
Thank you for that, Council Thorburn. Second here, please. Council Frasier. Well done. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Next item is proposed revisions to the Taxi Bylaw, and is someone going to, okay, the CAO is going to give us a brief rundown on that, would you mind doing that, and then we can put the motion on the floor?
For sure.
Through the mayor to council, so work on the bylaw has been ongoing for a couple of years and gone through a few hands, initially examined, looking at doing a joint bylaw with the municipality, that didn't work out, so there was two main drivers to the work, to the bylaw revisions that staff have presented for initiation tonight. One was taking the fees schedule out of the bylaw itself and putting in our fees policy, which would enable us to work more closely with industry and move fees accordingly with more ease than opening up the bylaw itself, and as such, we have done a poll with industry, and should it be the will of council to eventually approve this bylaw? to eventually approve this bylaw, we'll ha, we have a report ready to go with those new fees that coincide it with some of those discussions with the taxi companies, uh, upon the initiation of the bus service. The second piece, and really the big piece, was the enforceability of the bylaw to ensure that we can make sure that, um, um, taxis that are operating, uh, delivering residents in, or picking up in the Town of Bridgewater are licensed by municipal authority. Um, and the enforcement, uh, staff will be able to, um, deal with unlicensed taxis. And the bylaw gives them the ability to do that and, uh, which is a public safety item. There's value in having and hiring a licensed taxi, uh, generally around public safety. Vehicles are expected and the drivers go through, uh, some basic, uh, background checks for that. So, this bylaw provides for better public safety and enforcement, uh, to ensure that taxis operating in the Town of Bridgewater, um, are licensed.
All right, thank you. And I do, I do believe we're going to have some clearer way for people to see that that cab has been licensed as well, some new stickers that go on the cabs.
Decals, yeah.
Uh, yes, please?
Yeah. The town council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the intent of the amended taxi by law, chapter eleven, as per document seventeen dash one nine-three, and proceed to second reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on January eighth, two thousand eighteen, and to authorize staff to public and all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Do you want to amend the date on that?
No, January.
Okay. All right, now a secondary? Donald, discussion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So, a few years ago, we tried to get the Lunenburg County municipalities to buy into a taxi wa, taxi, uh, county-wide taxi by law. That didn't pan out. Do each of the towns have their own individual, or each of the municipalities have their own individual taxi by law? I can't remember, like Lunenburg as an example.
So, through, through the mayor to council, the Town of Lunenburg does have a bylaw that mirrors ours and is enforceable. So, somebody displaying a Town of Lunenburg, uh, license could drive a person from the Town of Lunenburg to the Town of Bridgewater, uh, or take them back and us vice versa.
Okay.
And, and that would be, uh, allowed under our bylaw.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Grace?
So, just a couple of questions. If I read it right, if an unreg, unregulated or unregistered taxi is going from Pine Grove to Pleasantville, they're not allowed to come through the Town of Bridgewater? So, they have to circumvent the Town of Bridgewater to get from Pine Grove to Pleasantville?
Through, through the mayor to, to council. Uh, you would need to be, to pick up or drop off a passenger in the Town of Bridgewater. You would need to be licensed.
So, they can drive through, they just can't, they can't do any business within the Town of Bridgewater?
Okay. Okay. And, um, I don't see anything there about driver's safety. Is that, is that relevant? Just in terms of partitions or panic buttons, warning lights? Just curious more than anything else. Also, there's no mention that about alcohol. There is more mention about smoking, but there's no mention about open alcohol? Just throwing that out.
For the passengers, you mean?
Yeah.
That would be illegal. Illegal under the Motor Vehicle Act, so it'd be redundant.
And is there a consumer complaints mechanism? If somebody have a complaint, is there a way of?
So, we do that now through bylaw enforcement, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, are the fees going to be one hundred percent cost recovery?
Fees are determined, uh, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the fees are determined by the cabs themselves. So, they, they come up with the fee that they'd like to charge. And we pulled it out of the bylaw, but, um...
But if it costs a town, say, three thousand dollars?
Oh, those fees, sorry, I meant taxi fees. The fees for inspections and things like that?
So, there's a, there's an employee that's, that's doing all this and he or she is going to have, it's going to take some time. There's going to be some expense. So, are the fees charged to the taxi drivers going to be enough to cover the cost of the fees of, to provide the service?
Through the, through the mayor to council, um, I would need to further review to ensure that they were cost recovery. My assumption is that they're not full cost recovery, but, uh, I would examine that they're based on, uh, comparison with other rates to be, um, equitable and fair. But, uh, uh, I'm not sure that they would provide full cost recovery.
Councilor McGinnis?
So, someone who's operating a cab that is not resident or the address of the cab business is not in town would have to buy a license in town or could buy a license in town to operate?
Through, through the mayor to council, correct. They would have to, if they wanted to do business in our town, they would have to, uh, uh, comply and be licensed here or in another municipality. So, if you were licensed in the Town of Lunenburg, you can pick up or drop off here.
Okay. You could get around that by just taking your sign off and driving in town.
You could. I could tell you that the cab industry here polices itself quite well. Um, so they know everyone and I would say that in speaking to the acting police chief, they also know who operates a cab. And so, when they pop their sign off, the, nothing's getting by on them.
This bylaw, our policy, is long overdue.
Councilor Thorburn?
Uh, just under six dot seven A, it says that the chief of police shall conduct a criminal record check with respect to the applicant. Shouldn't there be a vulnerable, uh, sector check done to where kids and, or in those car?
Let me read that again, because the one that's done is...
Seven B, they, they do part of this, criminal record check. They don't do anything for the child part of it. I think it should be, if they're going to be driving in cabs, it should be protected.
Actually, I think the Town of Bridgewater, the police service in Bridgewater is the only one that does both at the same time.
Yes.
So, I think it actually is covered. I know what you're saying.
But it doesn't say it here.
Yeah.
It gives shows one, and I'm asking for the second one to be added.
But when the Town of Bridgewater, when the police do their criminal record check, they do that second one. They do the vulnerable sector check as well.
To Councilor Thorburn's point, can we, can we confirm that it's either included when it's done or needs to be included in the wording?
Yep.
And I would say that when we get to second reading, if we didn't need to add that line, it's just a line, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, good point from both. Councilor McDonald?
I may have missed this, but is there an education piece, um, you know, whether it's the bridge or social media to let people know, look for this sticker and you know that this taxi has been safety inspected, they've had criminal record checks and so on for your safety?
Through the mayor to, uh, to the council, uh, through, through the mayor to council, absolutely. So, staff's reviewed this and should it be the will of council to approve this bylaw, we will do a, um, public education campaign on the value of, of, uh, hiring a Town of Bridgewater licensed taxi.
Great.
Councilor Graves?
So, under six point two and, and six point two A, it says unless such a person is in possession of a valid taxi or a limousine driver's license, under this bylaw, which is conspicuously displayed in the motor vehicle and is readily visible to any passengers who may be in the vehicle, no person shall transport passengers for compensation in or through any public place within the town yeah, in any taxi or limousine. So, getting back to that original question, if you're living in Pine Grove and you want to go to Pleasantville, they would be going through town if they're unlicensed. That wouldn't be allowed. Is, is that right or am I reading that right?
I agree, that's misleading.
So, just want some clarity? Some clarity?
That's, that's, uh, through the, through the mayor to council, we can clarify that. I don't believe we would have any way we could enforce if somebody was picking somebody up in Queens and taking them to Chester, you know, if they cut through for coffee.
Okay, just, just what it's, the way I read it.
Yeah. We'll just check that. Any other questions? No, hearing none. Questions being called, all those in favor? Disposed, motion is carried. Good discussion on that and we'll make sure that some of those points are clarified for second reading in general. Uh, recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer, Headville Sewer Service Rates, notice to municipality, the District of Lunenburg. I think if you wouldn't mind, do you want to say that before we put the motion on the floor?
Sure. Sure, I'm happy to. Uh, so through, uh, through the mayor to council, um, met with staff recently to discuss, um, some of the work that's ongoing with regards to the study with respect to, um, sewer rates in the future, uh, wastewater rate study. And that will inform some recommendations that will come to council, uh, probably summer twenty eighteen, uh, to consider for the, uh, town rate. At the same time, we discussed that, uh, there'll be a recommendation coming forward, um, on the Headville Sewer Services Agreement where, uh, we provide, uh, service to, um, some residents of, in the municipality District of Lunenburg and have a nineteen eighty-two agreement, um, to accept their sewage and, um, that we would be looking for council's, um, approval to give notice of a rate increase pending that study. Um, and, um, that's the, um, that's the background for this report.
So, currently, we have to give them three years' notice. Is that what I read in the email?
So, through, through the mayor, uh, to, to, to council, um, there's been, I guess, uh, staff don't, staff do not believe that we require to give three years' notice for a rate. We would just like to simply give our notice timely and move forward a rate increase when we're ready to advise some of the new rate.
That's good. Cause I was gonna say, I don't think we give our residents three years' notice. And so, our residents shouldn't...
Three months' notice.
Yeah, our residents shouldn't be held to a lower standard than their residents'. Yes, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Well, so that is a question perhaps for, uh, Dawn. So, when we did decide to gradually start incrementally increasing our sewer rate, when we made that decision, it was budget time. When did it actually come into effect? When did the resident have to pay that new in, that fee?
It was always at the effect of at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, ta, the interim tax bills don't go out until August. So, it would be, it would be on the...
Sure, okay.
So, it's my understanding that the residents in Headville now pay less than the residents in the town?
That's been the case for the last two years. We, we haven't been able to determine how the Headville rates. They've just, they were changed a couple of times and I wasn't here at the time, so we, we don't know how they were established.
But there's a plan, going to be a plan to make sure that the residents in the Town of Bridgewater are not subsidizing the residents in Headville?
Yes. I've got a note in the eighteen nineteen budget file to make sure that we, we look at that this year. It's just been the last two years. For quite a number of years, it actually was the other way.
Should it be something that moves, like every time we do it, like their rate is always a hundred and ten percent of our rate, so that whenever we move ours, it's just a natural bump and we can give them that notice? Is that something we can do?
Yes.
Two hundred percent or whatever?
Well, yeah. So, through the mayor to council, so historically, whether it was the Headville rate or the Town of Bridgewater rate, i- it hasn't covered the full cost to manage the assets, depreciation on all of that. We need, we were looking for, and we're doing the work to bring forward a solid recommendation of where that rate should be and that would inform that the Headville rate. So, it should be based on objective data and we'd be looking forward to making a recommendation to council based on that. We're not clear as staff right now how previous rates, particularly for Headville, were, were created, um, or based on, which, which may, makes it a challenge for staff to recommend a rate, uh, for that agreement without understanding how they were developed in the past.
So, but I think it's, I think it's very safe to say that objective data or not, we know that residents in the Town of Bridgewater aren't paying full cost recovery on our sewer, the, the ability to repay that and then to fund that. So, uh, I think maybe to your point, I think it's safe for us, or at least in my opinion, I think it's very safe for us to increase the Headville sewer rate to at least what the Town of Bridgewater residents are paying today and probably a little bit of percentage more to, one, make up for two years of being subsidized by the town taxpayers, but also knowing that we're going to get them up there eventually anyway, because we know that this study's probably going to tell us that it's X dollars more than the current, uh, current rate. So, uh, yeah, I don't know what that percentage is.
So, no, so, so, um, it would be based on council's discussion on the matter, as we've discussed this in council today and between when the report came out, um, I, I would suggest that it, that, uh, during the development of the eighteen nineteen budget for the fiscal year, we established that new Headville rate. Cause that's billed fiscal, no different than ours. So, um, I, I don't believe that we'd be in a place to change the rate for this fiscal. It would need to be next fiscal at the earliest. We had planned to just simply give them their notice for the new rate following the study. Uh, however, if it's the will of council to, um, to direct staff to, um, to work on, bringing the rate up to at least the same level of the Town of Bridgewater, it would be most appropriate to do that at the eighteen nineteen budget when we're setting all of our rates.
But then we lose six months.
No, you lose two years plus.
No, no, but if, if we, if we don't get our ducks in a row till after the budget's passed, the first bills go out in August. But if we can get our ducks in a row, would they not go out at budget time? Like, if we give them notice now and then set the price before budget, would their, would their, would their bills not be set to a different level?
Not normally. The, like, the budget for eighteen nineteen
Doesn't start?
Would, doesn't start until the first of April and, and we bill in August. That's when we do our bills. We bill in August. Sorry, I'm sorry. We bill in May and August. So, the, what we do is we bill half of last year's rate on the interim and then whatever needs to be adjusted is adjusted on the final. So, if the rate goes up, it gets adjusted on the final bill. And if we wanted to talk about going back and recovering for the last two years on the Headville bills in their eighteen nineteen rate, we could, we could do that.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, I just had a question. Back in, in eighty-two, I guess the capacity that they added was roughly twenty-three thousand gallons, imperial gallons per day into our system. And it looks like in, in September, the twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-nine, that was increased to two hundred thousand gallons, imperial gallons per day.
That was to accommodate the water treatment, our water treatment plant?
Water treatment plant? Where I'm going with this is eventually, we're going to be charging, uh, our residents for water going back into the system. So, we'd have to have some way of measuring that.
It, it, they, we are billed by, that, sorry, the Public Service Commission is billed by munis, by the municipality, the District of Lunenburg, or the discharge into the Headville sewer system. So, we, the P S C pays a bill for that every year.
Yeah, but when we change...
And we pay a certain percentage. Yeah, when that rate goes up, the P S C bill's going to go up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just to clarify my mind, because I'm a little bit confused. Right now, the residents in Headville are paying less than the Town of Bridgewater residents for their sewage. We may not increase our sewage rate for the residents in the town this coming year, but I do want to see the rates
Yes.
For the Headville increase next year.
Yes.
And that's where we're going.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we can work out all the details during budget.
I'm, I'm not interested in waiting for an increase at budget time. I'm interested in doing an increase now primarily because Headville residents have been subsidized by Town of Bridgewater residents for, in less, in essence, the last two years and probably more, given that the infrastructure recovery, you know, isn't there. And I don't know why we're waiting. For me, it's let them have no, notice now and when that, that next bill goes out, there's a recoup.
The next bill doesn't go out till next year.
Till May, right?
Right.
Right. So, when that May bill goes out, they're going to see an increase at least equivalent to the Town of Bridgewater.
So, that was my point. I didn't want to wait till the August interim. I wanted to get it out.
We understand that. That's what we understand. Yes.
Like, as quick as we can.
Yes, we'll give them notice now effective eighteen nineteen budget.
Yep. All right. Now, does someone want to make a motion?
Let me just check this, make sure that it works. Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
And I know it's to do with the wording of the motion. Is it the year? Is that what we want to say? Is that what we want to say? It says 2019, '20.
No, 1819.
Shouldn't it, I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, it should be 1819.
1819.
Yeah, change to that. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer and provide the municipality of the District of Lunenburg notice of a future rate change to the 1982 Hebbville Sewer Service Agreement in advance of the 2018-19 fiscal year.
Okay, Secondar. Counselor Graves, any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
It doesn't say the amount, in my opinion. So how do we know what we're billing? How do they know what they're going to get billed? And frankly, I'd like to see a bit of an increment on that as well, a surcharge on that, a 10%, 20% in addition to what the town of Bridgewater residents pay to make up for the two years that hasn't been billed at the current town of Bridgewater residents level. And we already know that the infrastructure, it's not, the fees aren't cost recovery on the infrastructure. So adding 10% to 20% seems like a natural, because you know the study's going to come back in a year that says, boy, you're nowhere close to the real number.
So I think this is just to give them a heads up that a rate increase is coming. That's how I wrote that. This isn't, we're going to debate the rate increase, but this is just to say...
Oh, okay, okay. So we don't have to give them a dollar today? Okay.
This is just, the motion is just notice of a future rate change.
Yes, thank you. I get it. Maybe that's what Dawn was trying to tell me.
No, but the timeline is important, because if we debate it at budget time...
Okay.
And then it goes out with the August billing, right?
You're right.
Well, I think we all want that out in the May. Like, we want our money, okay? We subsidize, I don't know how to say that, and that'd sound mean, but, right? To the deputy mayor's point, we as taxpayers of the town of Bridgewater, all 8,600 people who live here have subsidized someone else's infrastructure, and we shouldn't. So as quickly as we can start recouping that, because it impacts Mr. Feener and the work that he can do, because it's money out of his budget. Really, right? Do we vote on that yet? No. Let me bring up your question. Question being called. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Good debate on that one. We've gone live there for a minute, eh? Perfect. Recommendation to Downtown Planning Advisory Committee, stakeholder representative appointment. Someone would like to make that motion? Please?
I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater to endorse the recommendation of staff and appoint Art Happening Ashton Rodenizer to sit on a Downtown Planning Advisory Committee as a stakeholder representative for a three-year term commencing November 2017.
Secondar, please. Counselor Frasier, discussion?
Just a comment. Five of the eight members all expire at the same time.
Yes. They are...
Is that a good thing?
Well, not necessarily. We're beginning to get things changed up a little bit, because they were all original members to the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee. So they all started their term at the same time, and they've all expressed interest in continuing their term. It's uncertain as to whether they'll all fulfill it. But now we have a bit more of a, you know, we have some new members who've joined at different times of the year. So we'll have some, we're beginning to get some variation in the committee.
And variation is good.
Variation is great.
Great question. Counselor, Dawn.
So this appoint Art Happening?
Yes.
And should Ashton Rodenizer no longer be involved in Art Happening? Somebody else would just be replaced to represent Art Happening as a stakeholder? Okay. I just want to clarify that.
No, it's the same as, at this time last year, Kenneth Young from the Town Center Development Court applied as a stakeholder.
Right.
And it's the same, so Town Center is the stakeholder.
Again, okay.
That's just who they've appointed to sit for the time being.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Second quarter 2017-18 financial report. Ms. Kaiser.
So the second quarter report shows, if you compare year-to-date budget to actual, about a $200,000 surplus. It's really hard to tell, excuse me, six months into the fiscal year where you'll land, though. So that's going to change, guaranteed, between now and year-end. Staff do their best to estimate what monthly budgets would be, but there are just a lot of timing differences this early in the fiscal year. I will mention a few things that will stick. Right now, we're looking at lower than budget for tax revenue. So we've got some assessment appeals and reductions. We've also got, the parking levy is less than budget, because if you recall, late in the process, we changed and gave credits to, for onsite parking. But on a positive note, the transfer taxes looking really good again this year. Other revenue from own sources, we're down on the meter revenue in parking, or, sorry, the parking meter revenue and parking fines, because that really hasn't taken off. There's, we're waiting on the province, working on the ability to register the tickets at the registry of motor vehicles, so that that process is quite slow dealing with the province. Few more things I'll mention. Administration, legal fees are significantly over budget. We've got the, we had the school review, and we've also got the cannabis files. Employee management, that line is looking good, because not as much was spent on the CAO recruitment as was budgeted. There was a budget for recruiting firm. Liability claims are already over the full year budget. Now, we do have a reserve of about 17,000, but that line is still going to be over budget. We had two claims that we put to pay the deductible on. In police, a lot of that is timing, but there is a savings, because the bylaw enforcement position hasn't been filled yet, again, along the lines of, we're waiting for the province on the ability to take the parking tickets. I don't think, unless there are any specific questions, I don't think there was anything else I was going to mention. There are comments on the capital projects. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try or deflect to mayor.
Questions from members of council?
So we're truly not handing out any parking tickets for meters that are expired, because we're waiting for the province to be able to revoke licenses or points, or whatever the case may be? Is that how I understand that one?
I'm not sure if that's totally, I think the fact that we don't have a bylaw enforcement position, and we don't have the bylaw enforcement position, because we don't have the teeth to enforce the parking tickets.
But we've never had the teeth to enforce the parking, as I understand it, correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
But the collections have really been, have declined in recent years. I mean, people paying them has declined.
But we have seen a fair amount of revenue in parking meter revenue.
Let me just take a quick look and see.
Just relying on the goodwill of people to pay their parking tickets, I guess, maybe.
I mean, we, like, people have to pay their parking tickets. It's the mechanism to collect it, that, so that they are...
But most people don't realize that. They do now, I guess, because we've just said it on public television.
Yeah.
You know, but, right?
So parking meter fines, there's hardly anything.
I think the biggest issue is we don't have a bylaw enforcement officer that's out walking the streets.
We probably should check that out with a SCOT.
Yes, I can verify that. We know that the recruitment will be shortly after New Year. That would be, I don't know the answer off the top.
I believe I asked this a couple of months ago. Do we have a mechanism in place where we're actually going out and collecting money out of the meters? Because I haven't seen a report on the police commission that shows revenue from the parking meters for the one, unless, I wasn't to the last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was up quite a bit this year.
Yeah, because they, yeah, anyway. That's my question.
We do have a staff member on occasion that goes out and has been collecting money.
Is it a consistent schedule?
No.
But there is quite a bit of money in the parking meter revenue account.
That's good. Good to know.
People are paying for parking.
I guess my other question, Dawn, has got nothing to do with parking meters. It's got to do with how much time we need to get the results from the second quarter that's completed in September. Here we are in December. Does it actually take that long to put that together?
Well, it takes about a month to get a good cutoff. But my vacation is the problem.
Okay. No, I just, it seems like it's such a long time.
Because the fall is kind of the only time I can take any amount of vacation, because I'm budget and then year-end. So the second quarter report suffers.
Okay, no, that is a fair answer to a fair question, I think. Thank you.
If I can add to that, add to her engagement.
Happily.
Gift on, yes. Also, the, so, and Dawn and I have been talking about the ability to, you know, after the second quarter projections, there's nothing really profound that comes out of it. So we have been talking about how we can improve our projections and our forecasting, so that, you know, as we work through with tighter and tighter budgets, we can figure out where our capacity is. So that's something that Dawn and I will be working with council on going forward around, you know, financial stewardship and what we can do around information forecasting.
So, another question. So we were doing this budget pretty much month by month. Why couldn't we get the results monthly instead of waiting to record it?
So the quality of the information you have may not be relevant when we run a report, because of the time to post and all of those things. It's important to me and for Dawn, is that when we're providing information, that it's telling you a good story or a good picture. So we need to, in this report, not only run the financials, but the managers need to go through them and explain what's up, what's down, what's sideways. So, you know, Dawn asked, so why are your legal services over? And I said, well, council wanted to do a school review, and we've had this cannabis thing. So, you know, without that sort of information, it's difficult for council to assess things. I mean, I'm sure we could run reports in town suite or whatever. I run them frequently, but the informations, it would be, it would lead to probably inaccurate conclusions without that. But I agree, we would like to move towards where we have something where in the fall there's that forecast a little more robust, because right now, it's good. We need to, we need to work on that too.
Okay, no, it's fair. So, Dawn, does anyone have to ask a question?
Question.
No. No, 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 it's a question. Any other questions?
Nope.
Poor Dawn's going to be up there.
Nope.
All right. Thank you for the update. Recommendation to Sustainability Planner for Quest Canada project application. It's pretty straightforward. I don't know if there's a staff person giving a report on this. Just a little background, maybe, just for the public?
A little background. I mean, just quickly, we were, about six or seven different people, including some folks from Quest themselves, suggested that Bridgewater consider applying to this program, just because it is a way to help quantify and sort of have some indicators developed that would demonstrate change and progress that we'll be making towards our sustainability goals. So it aligns very nicely with the work that we're currently doing, and it would be great. A lot of people thought it would be great if Bridgewater could participate in this, and it's something that we took a closer look at and thought it would really align well with being able to tell our story of how we're making change in this community.
Great. Someone care to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Should I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater direct staff to submit an application to Quest Canada by December 15, 2017, to participate on in the Quest Smart Energy Community Scorecard Project, including provision of a statement by council endorsing the initiative to be included as part of that submission?
Fantastic. Secondar, Counselor Dawn, any questions?
I may just say that when I suggested that we spread the good word, Mr. DeBree took that very seriously, and I just want to pass along my thanks and congratulations to him for doing so.
That's great. You ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is staffing changes, facility maintenance technician. Mr. Feener, did you have an update for that, just an explanation?
Sure. Council approved a two-year term position for a facility maintenance technician in April 2016. That two-year term's coming due this April, 2018. This position assists with facility repairs, as well as many other maintenance and capital projects for the town and PSC. The town's realized savings in the vicinity of 26% to 48%, depending on the type of work that this position's doing, which totals about a $30,000, $32,000 annual savings in labor alone, labor rates. As far as the budget goes, it's already incorporated in the budget. If this position wasn't doing the work, we'd be contracting out. So there's no impact to the budget. It just helps keep those budget numbers lower. So we're seeking council's approval to make this position permanent.
Anyone care to put that motion on the floor?
I would move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of engineering department, and that the two-year term position of facility maintenance technician be approved as a permanent, full-time position.
Secondar? Counselor Frasier, sorry. Any further discussion?
Just a question.
Yep.
That individual does a fair amount of electrical workforce and that type of thing?
Currently, yes.
Yes. Will he be able to continue to do that as an employee of the town? Is there, will he need no site?
Well, the individual himself holds a certification for doing that work. So depending on who is in that position as a permanent position, the position itself is centered around maintenance.
Sure, yeah.
In this particular case, for the term position, we are fortunate enough to have other skills and certifications that could be used. That's why we gave the savings of 26% for maintenance-type work versus some increased savings for other type of work that this particular individual could do.
Counselor.
Yeah, it'd be a fair amount of savings, because you won't have to go to tender and use a lot of staff time. And certainly, when you do go to tender, the cost of the people to do the job is going to be increased substantially. So if this position's not filled, then our budget will go up.
Yes, we didn't, and we didn't incorporate any savings for staff time for the procurement process.
Right.
That certainly would be a savings.
Substantial, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is the recommendation of the Director of Finance for the 2018-19 budget process, with some dates in there. I was really pleased with how efficient the budget process was last year. I thought it was really, it was streamlined, and it was done in a timely manner, and the discussion was good, and we weren't nickeling-diming here. We put that trust in our staff to do that, yet we still had that debate over some items. So that schedule is before you. If someone would like to put that motion on the floor? Or, Ms. Kaiser, did you want to add anything to that?
This is remarkably similar to last year's.
Sure.
Just differently.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the 2018-2019 budget process as presented in document 17-201, and as follows. Monday, March 26, which is a regular council meeting, discussion of preliminary capital budget. Thursday, March 29, proposed operating and capital budget provided to council. Tuesday, April 3, which is a budget meeting, budget discussion and debate. Monday, April 9, regular council meeting, budget discussion and debate. Monday, April 16, budget meeting, budget discussion and debate. Monday, April 23, which is a regular council meeting, budget discussion and approval.
Okay, Secondar. Counselor Frasier, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So assuming we approve April 23, that gives you enough time to do a potential increase in bills for Hebbville?
It normally does...
Sorry, I'm stuck on a topic here.
Normally, on the interim bill, we just bill half of last year's and do the catch-up in August. Now, if we wanted to approve a rate for Hebbville kind of ahead, so that we, because the interim bills go out the end of April...
Right.
Do the end of May. So if we want to have the Hebbville increase in place, because the other thing about the town sewer rate increase is it has to go through the bylaw process. The rates are in the bylaw. So the rate actually doesn't get through the bylaw process till probably... So, so the rate actually doesn't get through the bylaw process till probably June.
Sure.
So, but the HEV bill rate doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the bylaws. So we could set it in advance if we wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think that's, seemed to be the will of council to make that, that run whether it went to the end of April or May. We voted on that, right? RFP for supply of multi-space pay stations. So this is for parking, this is part of our budget last year in our discussion, our discussion that we had a number of times on parking. Care to put a motion on the floor and then we can, Council Frasier?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll put forth the motion that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award RFP 2017-08 supply of multi-space pay stations to purchase five multi-space pay stations to J.J. McKay Canada Limited for a price of $39,186.25, including HST, a net price of $35,535.45, plus the recommended additional spare equipment in the amount of $3,205.85, including HST, or $2,007.18 net HST.
Have a secondar please. Council McInnes, discussion?
We'll just go around the table.
Well, I'm not sure if the Deputy Mayor said the same question as me, but we don't have a bylaw option. Are you hiring one?
Yes.
When?
January.
In January, we'll have someone on the ground.
The recruitment started, the applications are in.
Okay. We're gonna put these in, we're gonna use them, we're gonna enforce them.
Who's next? Do you want to just go, just go around?
Go around this way for a change, Your Worship. No, I like the motion as the way it is, but I'd like to see the budget amount in there so we know if we're under budget or over budget. We used to put that amount, the budget amount was, so it comes up to about $41,442.63. What was in our capital budget for that expenditure?
Forty-five thousand, I think they were.
No, but I'm just, I'm using a net number, but I just wondered what.
The approved budget for the supply and install this equipment is $64,500. Is what it says in the report.
If I could speak to that for a moment, Your Worship. That's a little misleading because there are a few other components within that $64,500. So there's some signage, there were a few meters that we were looking at purchasing, but we don't have to because we actually have some that we can use. And I believe a portion of that was slated for stairs in the town center parking lots, from what I recall.
Only if we, yeah, only if we get money from.
Correct. So as, with regards to the meters, there's a, there's about a $39,000 portion of that that was anticipated.
And that's what I'm looking for here, so we can find out, get a truer picture and look at the savings or what else it's going to cost us. Thank you.
Council McDowell?
Just want to clarify, because you're gonna get sick of these questions. We will be able to collect those tickets, that's in progress. And we're just waiting for the final okay, are we, is that correct? Do we access Nova Scotia, I think it is? Yeah.
Our action with, yeah, with the province in order to put them on so you can't renew your license.
That's in progress, but we, are we certain that we're going to be able to collect?
We can collect parking tickets, yes.
Okay, that they will collect for us.
It's, it's helpful, this extra work.
No, but in terms of, I mean, this has been a debate for a while. So the issue is that if you don't pay your parking tickets, you can still go get your sticker on your license plate renewed. So right now, we're, we've made application, I believe, to the province.
Yeah.
So that when you go to renew your license, you won't be able to unless you pay your parking fines in the Town of Bridgewater. So to, to Council McDowell's point, we want to, it would be nice, would have been nice before today, but it would be nice to have an update on where that stands. Is it taking longer than normal? Is it, is this how long it takes? Are there, is there something that is going to cause us to come off the rails? Do we need to call?
I'll bring this back to council. I, I'm aware of the work and I just can't in my mind remember exactly where it is today.
I think it normally takes a long time.
Yeah.
So perhaps, perhaps I'll email the Minister of Justice to see if he can, has our M L A, see if he can kind of find out where that is. I'll do that tomorrow morning. Does that answer your question?
It does, but it doesn't make me comfortable spending that kind of money, knowing that we may not be able to actively collect those tickets because they, we are relying on the collection of those tickets pretty strongly to recoup some of that cost. And if, you know, word is getting out there more and more often that we can't actually take action on that, if only 50% of the people actually pay, then, you know, kind of on the hook for those costs.
I, I wouldn't understa-, I, I, I wouldn't see why they wouldn't approve it at some point. Like, we're not breaking new ground here, other jurisdictions do it. So we're just asking for what, I mean, HRM, they do that.
Yes, I, I believe that's true. I think the process, I think it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Is my understanding of it. Is that you, Jessica, as well?
But I'll see if I can maybe ask, reach out to the.
Rattle chains?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Council Grace.
So we're getting five, five pay stations. What's going to happen with Co's parking lot, those eight to 10 spots in the Co's park? What, what might be considered the Co's parking lot? You're not going to have a pay station.
Down in the new park there in the Genus.
No, there will be meters. Those are the meters that we were talking about, the extra meters, yes.
So they will have individual meters then?
Yes.
Do we, do we know when the pay stations are coming in?
I do not know the delivery on them.
Okay, but it, it's relatively soon, I take it?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's something that these guys deal with very frequently and they're very widespread. So I don't anticipate it'll be long.
Okay, just thinking of King Street, for two of those meters, they're solar powered. King Street will back onto the south side, the west side, excuse me. So are they going to have enough sunlight to operate, do they need a lot of sunlight?
We discussed locations with the supplier and they're very familiar because they're actually our meter supplier as well. And they didn't have any issues, there'd be battery backups as well, but, and they didn't see any issues.
They didn't, okay, good, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So if we had a bylaw enforcement officer today, they would be actively issuing parking tickets in the Town of Bridgewater for those that didn't feed the meter?
Through, Your Worship, today they would not be because we provide free parking for the month of December.
Oh! It's burned.
You waited all that time to ask that question.
Did we actually approve that?
Too funny.
It's perpetual.
What?
Free parking in December is perpetual unless you say, unless we vote otherwise.
Too funny, yeah. Can I change my date? November, if, if November 1st was today.
So we have not considered doing it otherwise?
Yeah, let's, let's answer this question, then you go back.
So there has been parking enforcement underway?
Okay.
The proper level of parking enforcement will ramp up.
Okay. To your question, free parking in December, the, the motion that was made years ago is that basically it's free parking in December until council says it's no longer free parking in December. So no, we don't need to make a motion.
So my, my question would be if, because we had this discussion when we were earlier on this year. If indeed free parking is good for the month of December, why is it not good year round? Because we voted against having it year round on King Street. So I don't understand. Why, why is free parking good for a month of December but not good year round? I guess the rationale escaped me.
Well, there's 11 months of revenue difference there. So that, that, for me personally, that's, that's part of it, is if you're going to make it free parking, then someone, then the taxpayer's now paying for the parking infrastructure.
But if you want to have King Street compete with the Bridgewater malls and the Walmarts and the plazas which have free parking, you should not have paid parking on King Street. We had this discussion, we talked about the pay stations.
If you remember though, Bill, most, most of the problem was the, the business owner and their staff were parking in public spaces. That was the problem. And, and everybody was complaining that the other person was doing it.
So it's okay to do it in the month of December, but not year round?
Council McDowell?
I see it from a slightly different angle, that if paid parking is to maintain the flow of traffic, then we actually need it more in December than any other time of the year. But I think the, the businesses really see it as a, a kind gesture and for one month, if they see that as a really kind gesture, then fantastic.
I think part of it too for, was that our goal was to get rid of the parking levy. To get rid, if you want to get rid of the parking levy, I don't know how you do that and have free parking. If you want to maintain the parking levy, that's just me, Council Thorne?
Well, I think Council McInnes and I done some traffic checks last year down on King Street and I don't think that parking meters are needed in December.
No.
Further, Council Frasier?
I just had a question with regards to the pay stations. If there's any kind of warranty with these, what's required for maintenance? Even, I even think about staff, when we have snow, is there snow removal for clearance of these? So just those extra questions with regards to maintenance part.
Certainly we'll have to make sure that people can get to them in the wintertime. Some of them, two of them will be in the new part of King Street, which we clear the sidewalks. Anyhow, the other three would be in the parking lots and wherever they're located, we'll have to ensure that people can access them. And as far as.
Warranty?
I, again, I don't have the specifics, but certainly there would be at least a minimum 30 days and there may be more warranty with this. There's no options for extended warranty.
No options, okay. Just that there's significant costs, so I was just wondering what the maintenance.
And, and part of the recommendation was to have, to purchase some components. And these are components that although rare, that could, could cause an issue and potentially disrupt service. So it was suggested by the supplier to have these on hand so that we don't disrupt service for any length of time.
Council McDowell?
So this is for equipment only. I can't recall if in that original budget that had a few extra things in it, was the installation included in that or was it elsewhere?
They, they have offered to install them, provided the location is ready for them to install, but it's very simplistic, so it, it's not going to cost anything to us.
Any further discussion on these? Lots of good questions. Ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Recommendation to the Grants to Organizations Committee, Grants to Organizations, November 1 intake period. We've got, we've got a couple there, someone prepared to make a motion? Maybe someone from the committee?
Yes, Your Worship, I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grant to Organizations Committee and award grants for the November 2000, excuse me, 2017 intake period as follows. $500 capital grant to Hitching Brook Farm Society and $100 operating grant South Shore Multicultural Association Diwali Celebration.
Have a secondar please. Secretary Ma, Tanner, discussion?
No, I, Council Frasier and myself had a brief discussion with the C A O this evening. There seemed to be some discrepancy as to what the guidelines and what we should be looking at when we do grants to organizations. I know previous grants that we talked about, there were some questions asked that really weren't on the application, but were good questions. And I suggested that a future discussion session, we sit down and we, we, we look at how we do grants to organizations.
Council McDowell?
Just have a, a question about the multicultural association. And I, and I don't know if there's anything in our, our policies or application about applying after the fact and maybe they didn't apply after the fact, maybe it's just timing. Love the Diwali, I hope I'm saying it properly, Diwali celebrations. I've gone, hope to see more and more of those kind of celebrations in town. But if they've already paid for it, I would kind of wonder about the need if they're coming to us after the fact?
It was timing.
Timing, perfect. Great, happy to hear that.
Any other discussion?
Question.
Any more question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. You didn't jump in on that debate, Council Grace.
Well, what can I say?
All right, next item is the pre-budget estimate Bridgewater Memorial Arena. I'm sure this is going to spark a lively discussion. You have Druckmann in front of you, so of course we've had a couple of discussions on what to do with the Bridgewater Memorial Arena on Empire Street. It's been closed for a couple of years. And we did receive reports from staff talking about basically the infrastructure so it, it wouldn't be adequate for a dense residential development, at least at the time. I don't know, Mr. Feener, I don't know if you had something that you had prepared to talk about? Or if I can, okay, yeah, perfect.
So through the mayor to council, so at the discussion session last month, when we had a discussion with November 6, overviewing the use of the Bridgewater Memorial Arena, staff committed to bringing back some estimates in advance of the budget process for council as we get into early budget discussions in the process that, that Dawn has laid out. So staff provided some estimates on some work that should be done and then some things to be considered to make it more efficient for operations. That can be considered during the upcoming budgets. We don't specifically need any direction tonight on the arena. We simply were responding with that information before the budget. These are budget discussions or budget decisions for, for council.
Do any members of council have any questions about these? Council Frasier?
Yeah, I just, when it's the price breakdown for renovation to make facility accessible for larger vehicles, I guess maybe more specifically, what were you referring to when it said larger vehicles?
So currently there's the, the small bay door that, you know, we can get a half ton in.
Right.
On the south side, there's large wooden doors that we don't open often because they're difficult to get closed and we usually have to repair them when we do get them closed. So as an example, we've taken the floats from shipyards inside.
Okay.
With a backhoe, which we had to open those large doors. And that will give us access to work on those floats this winter to repair them. So things like that where we need, or that we could use, you know, cover or in the wintertime that we can do inside work or, or whatever is beneficial to us.
And then there was a separate breakdown quote for exterior doors. How many exterior doors are we looking at?
I believe there's 13 in the facility.
13?
And a number of them are rotten.
Okay.
So it becomes a security vandalism type thing that, you know, it, it could be done.
Okay.
Question is from Deputy Mayor Tanner.
As part of this whole exercise in, in heading into budget, is it possible to get an estimate of what it would cost to, to build or construct a facility that would do the bare bones of what we need from the arena, from the old arena?
Yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping to have that information for budget.
Okay.
Council McDowell?
I'd also be very interested, and you're talking about taking floats inside and you can work on them during the winter, you know, those things are increase the efficiency. But are there also cost savings that would offset some of this? You know, are there times when, because you have an indoor facility, work can be done internally rather than contracting it out or hiring someone to do that job? It may not be enough to really sit down and spend time figuring out. But if it's significant, then it might offset some of these costs and, you know, balance something.
I mean, that's probably a good example because obviously in the summertime, we want the floats in the water to, to, for people to use. And in the wintertime, it's difficult to, to do that work outside. So to replace those floats, to have somebody actually supply them, we've estimated it to be about double the cost for us to rebuild them or double the cost to buy versus rebuilding. So there's savings there. But yeah, there's, there's probably other opportunities as well.
Right, yeah, and like I said, if they're not significant, then, you know, the time would be wasted to sit down and really go. be wasted to sit down and really go through that, but.
Yeah, I had a similar question. Is there work that we can now do off-season? That means docks go in sooner in the spring, or we're not generating more overtime hours because, you know, the window of getting something done in the spring or the summer is so small, but now we can do it in the off-season. So, it'd be interesting to see those savings if there are any.
Yeah, and last winter, we built some of the trail bridges inside for down at Woodlands Gardens, and then transported them down. So, we've done that a few times.
So, is it safe to assume none of this work will be done until the budget process is complete?
Absolutely. There's no, yeah, no, that's budget, that's just a budget estimate.
Direction isn't given yet. Any further discussion on that? As always, if you have, if you need more information or questions, then through the C A O, and then we can just get to staff, and then that'll come back to a discussion session if there's information for all of this. Council Thorburn?
I agree with the deputy mayor. I think we have to, at some point, acknowledge that we have to have a facility for our equipment and our people. And I think it's important as soon as we can to get some information to help us make a decision, because spending a bunch of money on this may buy us a year or two, but at some point in time, we have to move from there.
Well, I'm not sure for me, I don't know if it's the right area of town that you want that kind of facility. Right? We have a public works garage in a certain part of town, because it makes the most sense to have it there. To have another kind of workshop, it doesn't really go with the, well, would it be a compatible, would be a compatible use kind of thing, right? So, yeah, I'd like to see what it would cost for, you know, maybe it's cost prohibitive, but it'd be nice to see what the cost of it is. Council McDowell?
That kind of stirs up another question for me. Is this facility, not considering the surroundings, is this facility the right fit, or is it just available? You know, that's, I think that's an important question. Does it fit our current needs, future needs? Can it be what is needed, or is it just available, and therefore, we're going to make it work? Just that, for that question to be part of what may come to us in the future?
Yeah. So, through the mayor to the council, that's, you know, those are really good questions, and, you know, we're not recommending at this point. We don't have recommendation either way. Larry has some work to do on that, and we can come back with some more. We were just simply, because we mentioned that there was some dollars that we were going to bring forward and advance the budget, and we'll continue to work on that file.
Perfect. Anyone else? No? All right. That concludes our meetings for 2017. I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I also want to thank those who worked on the Christmas on La Havre, all the events for that, to Council Graves and Council Frasier for the whimsical children's store and the success that that was. Yeah, it was great, you know, and thank all of council and staff for another great year. This is a great team. We continue to get emails and questions from around the province on how we're able to do the things we do, and it's because of the people that we have sitting around this table and within the whole organization, Public Works, PSC, wastewater, police, fire, everyone that we have. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for your contribution. And, yeah, any further ado? Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Council Thorburn and Council McDowell.
Sure.